Camera on going, okay. Welcome to the planning board meeting for Monday, September 28th, 2015. As you can see, we're short a bunch of members today, so we'll be asking everyone whether or not they want to proceed tonight or not. We have just a quorum, so certain things we can and can't do tonight. Thank you, H-Cam, for taping the meeting tonight. The agenda, we have three or four major, or minor items, really. We have 42 Main Street projects. It's an amendment to the site plan, Hayden Woods, Davenport Village. There's a proposed amendment for the flexible community development special permit in the design. There's some roadway changes for Legacy Farms Road North. And we have a continued public hearing for the library project. We've also got a couple other smaller projects and discussion items to go forward with today. So, with that, Greg, do you want to come forward?
Yep.
You've got five of us, which is all we need to do the vote.
Get all their copies.
So, I guess it's not a formal public hearing, it's an amended amendment, so there's nothing for me to open tonight, but why don't I suggest you start with a little explanation of what you're, why you're here, and then we'll open it up to questions.
I think you all have the package, but it's pretty simply went from a two-story with a basement down to a one-story. Site plan, everything else stayed the same. So there's no changes, other than it is now around 6,245 square foot new building going there versus the original 14,000 or so. So, design pretty much stayed the same, lighting, you name it. No changes other than that.
Imperious surface, all stayed the same, so that doesn't require us to review parking lots or anything else. So, let me ask, start with asking a couple of questions. What really caused the downside, just so we're kind of?
Well, a couple of things. I think that it probably was too big for the spot. That's number one. I think also that there's, kind of doing some, my own market research, the office market is already abundant here. We don't need more office market downtown, need more retail. And, you know, looking at the, how big the project got as far as the value of it versus downtown hopping, and it was going to basically be a little bit over budget. So, all in all, I think that now it sits and fits well within the confines of the property.
Okay.
And the fact that I owned, did not own 3036 at the time, and I have to make room for them as well.
Yep. And what's, how's the rental market coming? I'm just curious.
It's all booked out.
You got it all booked?
It's all booked out.
Congratulations.
Four apartments.
What?
It's only four apartments up top, so they booked out in the first.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about.
Oh, the new, no. As far as the new one, don't have, don't have any for sure. We're talking, you know, restaurants, still having problems getting restaurants downtown for whatever reason. Have a couple folks in town that want to move to a more prime location, but, you know, after this, we'll be breaking ground in the next week or so, and then we'll put the efforts into it, because it'll still be six to eight months in terms of the build.
Okay, so you are proceeding.
I am proceeding.
Great. Other questions from board members?
Will you be building in a way that would allow expansion in the future if there's a need to expand going up?
Going up, you know, the Art, yeah, they're always good saying, do you want to spend more money to maybe someday do it? But they've assured me that putting on a second floor, if we wanted to do it, we could do it. It's, once again, it's that whole cost benefit analysis and looking at parking and, you know, trying to take care, you know, from a business standpoint, just because you're able to do it doesn't mean it's necessarily good business practice. So, after we got the, you know, we purchased 3036, and, you know, folks wanted to have two cars and things like that, well, we had to accommodate them. So, that's kind of, you know, couldn't we do it? Yes.
Okay. So, parking's obviously a big issue, as we talked about in the original hearing, too. Okay, so those are all my questions. Other questions from board members? Any comments, questions from the public?
Again, parking is the issue. We're already having problems with the present occupancies of the yogurt place and the pizza parlor. They're already using, parking drugs parking lot, they're choosing, they're taking the prime locations. I've spoken to both the renters. Previously, I don't know how many parking spots that are presently paved and usable, but there are, there's no business going on in the downtown as I came up, and there were nine cars in the parking spots. And, you know, when I, when we put up signs to say, you know, this parking is for Hopkin Drug only, we just create bad will in the pub, in the community. And I don't want to be put in that position. And I really think that the parking really needs to be rethought significantly. I have the same problem downstairs in the lower parking lot with the Compton Farms, or what they call themselves now, Subway, whatever they call themselves. We have those, the lawn, lawn people parking, taking up a whole string of spots, because they can turn around. They can pull in on one side and pull in the other side, so I'm getting it from both ends. And it's just going to create, I'm being put into a position where I'm creating bad will because of other people's not having adequate parking and convenient parking. And I'd like the board to address this, if I could, please.
One of the things I'd suggest that you do is talk tomorrow with the zoning advisory committee. They're having a public forum at seven where they're addressing zoning bylaws, where his project, before he reduced the second floor, met the letter of the zoning bylaw, which is what we have to go on. Now, whether the bylaw that requires only 50% parking is a good bylaw at this point going forward, but that committee is where that would start.
But that's not going to solve the problem as it exists now.
Right. The town, and I think we agreed with you the last time you were here, the town needs to create some more downtown parking, which would help him out and certainly would solve all the other problems, too.
It's also convenience. That's the other part of it, because the way his buildings are going to be situated, the entrances are going to be such that people are going to be encouraged to park conveniently. And from what I gather, there's going to be parking spots taken away from the Main Street. So I believe that, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the sidewalks are going to be thinned and the roads are going to be widened, so that means that there's going to be less on-street parking, which means that it's going to be more convenient, once again, to use the drugstore parking lot. So if the entrances were perhaps located in the back, that would change the convenience factor, because that would be the primary way that they would be getting in versus having it on Main Street. So, even though I hear you saying that, you know, attending this other committee meeting might be very helpful, it's also convenience, because people are going to do what's easiest, fastest, and most convenient. That's it. We need this was.
Yeah, it's, you know, I guess the only response is that, you know, it's meet the bylaw, and, you know, it was created a few years ago. Whether or not that is what needs to be done, I personally would love to see another big parking lot downtown, because I think that's needed, and particularly if we go forward to 2019, when they do the road lighting, you know, you're going to lose a lot of spots, so.
I'll definitely attend the meeting tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great.
One of the questions that I had was, so if you don't know what's going in that building yet, it's just a matter of you're going to, you're going to put in that building to work with the spaces that already have been allowed for your building. Is that correct?
Uh-huh.
And my request would be, is if you folks would be so kind as to educate your tenants about where the parking, to let them, let their customers know where their parking is, in terms of just being a good neighbor, so that, you know, let them know that for this business, the parking is for on-street, and to post that.
Yeah, well, I believe it's a bad practice for us to post it as well.
Sure.
And, um.
Yeah, it does hurt.
Yeah, and I, and quite frankly, if somebody, I have a little bit different thought than you two do in terms of your property. I actually encourage other people to park in our lot, and we do have around 50 right now, so you have maybe 25% more, not much more.
It's going to be up a lot of the little lot.
Yeah, up a lot. So, the point is that I actually want people to come park in there, because it will enhance the businesses there. Doesn't matter, by the way, if they walk over to Hopkin and Drug. I'm just a landlord, by the way. I want my businesses in there to succeed, pay rent, and be viable in downtown. So, for me, you know, my wife's business is in the back. People park in the back. They don't park at Hopkin and Drug. They park in the back. So, I don't see it as a problem. I will encourage people to park in our space, because there'll be patrons, there'll be customers of our downtown community. So it's just a difference of opinion.
The opinion difference that we have is that we have to listen to our customers saying, why, we're all people. Why do we have to park in the lower lot or park someplace else when they come into the store? We're all people. And basically, they say, well, they're all over at the yogurt store. And to be honest with you, I'm very happy the yogurt store, that your tenants are doing well. It's wonderful. It's exciting. I'm happy for you. I'm just a little disappointed that part of it is going to be at the dissatisfaction of my clients, because that's why we purchased the property, to have convenience for our clients. And some of that convenience is going away.
In small downtown, it will.
If I may suggest, or at least observe, it could be a win-win here. Your tenants and your customers, there's a lot of overlap.
Absolutely.
Perhaps have, buy two gift cards, or whatever, and get, you know, half off on yogurt.
I think people already do that, though. I mean, people go in the Hopkin and Drug, and they come over and get a yogurt. People go get a yogurt and go to Hopkin and Drug.
I think that's true. I mean, the issue is the pharmacy customers more than the gift store customers. I mean, the people that are coming into the pharmacy are often sick, they're often have mobility issues, and we could, we could put more handicap parking. I've thought of that. You know, if people were conscientious about coming in and parking in the spots that are further down, which, you know, we've thought of doing different kinds of signage, so they will park in the spots that are available at the other end of the parking lot, but it doesn't work, it doesn't work that way.
It's tough. Consumers, we're going to go kind of what they want to do and where they want to go. And, I mean, unfortunately, you know, our downtown has always been handicapped by parking. But as I said, from my standpoint, I have no problem if people come and park in the lots that we've supplied and walk over to Hopkin and Drug and then go get a yogurt. For me, I look at that as the vitality of the downtown, it's increasing, which everyone needs.
Yeah, and again, I agree with you, if it wasn't for the pharmacy customers, it's an issue.
So, I don't know how to do it, other than saying that I'm open for both ways, and yet I can't force my tenants to put, and I've asked them, and they said, we're not doing it. We're not going to put something that tells our customers what to do. They're going to do what they want to do. So, your way is up to, it'll be up to you to post signs or tell people or whatever.
You have posted signs, and, you know, I don't want to have to come before the planning board to ask to be able to put up gated, basically gated parking situation, because that's not going to save, that's not going to win for you, and that's probably not going to win for me. But if it becomes, you know, it becomes pushing, but what, that may have to happen. And at what expense, and how inconvenient, so that's why we're here, trying to find a better way on record to work together, rather than, you know, well, we don't really care what, we don't really care, it's there, and our customers, our clients, they're just going to do whatever they choose to do, and tough for you. It's kind of.
Yeah, I guess, I'm not saying it just on my nose, it's, customers are customers, we don't own them. I mean, you know, and I only own the property. You know, our customers are the people that live in the town. They, they know where to park, not park. They know, we don't own them, we can't control them. That's all I'm saying. Not that I don't care, we just can't do anything about it.
Okay. Let's.
We can build synchronicities.
This, this change we forced today actually makes it a little bit better, given it takes away second floor and associated people that would be going to that particular area. Entertain a motion to determine the site plan conditions contained in section 210-136.1 continue to be met with the changes in the plan.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion, seeing none. How do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstained, motion carries. And then we entertain a motion to approve the site plan amendment, which lowers it to one floor, keeps everything else the same.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion, seeing none. How do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstained, motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Greg, and good luck in your construction.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Hayden Woods, Davenport Village. And we have two things coming before us.
You do?
One is the application for, let's start with the flexible community development bylaw. You're proposing to change what we approved, I guess, to the previous owner, really.
Right, I think it was approved through the, through Bill when he was asked in here. So I think the application that we submitted, I think he had agreed to 10 at the time, paying the, doing the payment in lieu of over 10 units, and we were looking to do it over 15. That was the request.
All right, no, he, was he providing a third floor unit?
He was providing a unit, and so your request is to make the payment in lieu of the unit.
Right.
So, basically.
He left it open somehow? I guess because it was.
No, he was going to provide the.
He was going to provide the unit.
So that's what the board.
So, basically, we're looking to do two things. One is to take it from a unit to a payment, and then the other discussion that I think we need per Elaine's memo, I think you're recommending occupancy permits as opposed to.
As opposed to after sale.
Yeah, because we can retract those.
We can track that.
As opposed to the sale is only if we catch it in the registry.
Come.
So, is there further discussion, or anyone care one way or another, getting the unit versus the payment?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So, if we do payment in lieu of a unit, does that then kind of kick the can down the road to the next developer that we need to hit a certain number of units themselves? Because there was one unit that was allocated for this development. Does that unit then fall to the next?
No, so each, each unit is, each development is responsible for providing their own, so it's one for every 10. So regardless of what else is in the pipeline, it's one for every 10.
But no, but I think Frank is saying, so that when we get to the census at 2020 or 2030.
Yes.
We will have cash in the bank, but not a unit.
Correct.
And that is, that's.
That's my question.
That's the issue, and that's, that's a significant issue. We had, when we came up with the Muse number of 280.
Yeah.
We figured we were going to lose a few like this. Mr. Perkins, when he owned it, he was the only one so far that had provided a unit versus the payment. Most people go, well, you know, do you put an affordable house in the middle of 750 to $2 million houses?
Right.
That probably doesn't work so well. But yes, the town, probably at 2029, might be short of a unit or two, and might have to develop some more housing authority units or something like that, but this would allow them to have some money to go. Or they could, you know, if places, if something comes up in town that they can rehab, that's something that the fund can be used for.
Is that what the fund's used for? I guess that question.
Yes, to buy, to buy or renovate units.
Do we have a, is, how much money is in the fund?
Right now, it's about $150,000.
And this would add another.
203.
203 on top of that.
So there's some payments I'm expecting as well from other developers who are doing a payment in the.
Do we need, I guess the question is, do we need money in that fund?
If you want to build units, you need money.
What if we don't build units?
Well, I mean, it's intended for that purpose.
Yeah.
You can't use it for anything else.
It's intended, the bylaw was intended, and I'm not sure it works really well, and I suggested last year that Zach take another look at it, because, you know, we're, we're all in short, and we want to keep our 10%. So that's, that's, how do you?
The board can say no to the payment. It's really at the discretion of the board.
We could say no to the payment, but I'm not so sure that that, well, speaking for myself, I'm not so sure that that's the best solution either.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the point of discussion.
That's the discussion.
Do we want to do that, or, I think there's pros and cons on both sides of it. I just would hate to get to the situation where you start, you've got a lot of these where I'll put the money in and pay for that, and it keeps their, that facade uniform, you know, to, Ken, as chairman, to your point of, you know, you've got all these expensive homes, then you've got one affordable housing unit at the end, a little bit of a wart on the end of your nose, so to speak, to some degree. But then, at the end of the day, that they're going to do the census and say, opportunity, you need X number of affordable housing units, and if you haven't hit the mark, we've got money, we can build them. Maybe that's the option, right? So we just say, hey, we'll build it.
One of the things, and we'll talk about it a little bit later more, was in the housing section that, for the master plan, it touches freely on that. A lot of these, if you have them owner occupied, it's easier for them to slip through the crack if they're sold, and then they can't find a buyer, so, you know, then we get another payment, the delta, but at the end of the day, we don't create units. I mean, the best is like the Muse or the apartments at Legacy, where you really, you keep them all.
Designated.
And there's only 25% are actually in the list. I mean, that's the best numbers and the easiest to administer.
Way to do it, yeah.
So, or the Housing Authority, which is the same, you know, I mean, that's publicly-owned housing.
Yeah.
So, this kind of creates the Housing Authority, or could partner other ways with it.
Is there a preference of the town, to have a unit or the money?
It's up to the board, it's at the discretion of the board. The intent of the bylaw was to create units, well, either through the fund or through development.
The developer.
If we create units, would it be something in the future that, where we have properties that we already have housing on, that we could build second floors or on a property that we already own? Or is this something we need more information on? Because I, I don't think I have enough information to move on this tonight as it is, but maybe you can fill me in. So I guess my question is this, the Housing Authority in Hopkin, would they be looking for more property to buy to build houses on, or would they be looking to expand what we already own and improve the stock a little?
I don't know if they have a plan either way, but I think if the town was, from my perspective, if the town wanted to create affordable units, it could be, it would be on some town-owned land, and so the land cost is low, and you can provide the affordable units. And so wherever that is, the Housing Authority.
Well, Fruit Street, part of it is designated as affordable housing.
So where that is, the Housing Authority could manage, it doesn't have to be where they currently are, it could be.
Well, they just said a lot of feedback about Fruit Street was so far away for, especially for elderly or something, people like to live downtown, we're trying to make a vibrant downtown, and.
Yeah. Putting affordable unit in this doesn't make that any better either.
No.
The long-term, the long-term vision, though, is to either have so many percentage or build, and if we're talking about accepting this, then we're talking about building, I need more information, and then if we're talking about the other side of it.
Is this a special permit that needs six votes?
Yes. So, if they were to provide the unit, you've already, units are already approved, the design and so forth, they just go ahead and one of the units would be affordable.
I originally thought, and this is maybe a side note, but I thought one of the houses that would be the gatehouse idea, and I don't know if that got lost along the way, or the idea might have predated.
It wasn't involved with the final approval of the project, and we bought the, the project more or less approved, so whatever Bill had, you know, essentially what was what we ended up.
It was designated as unit 18.
It was one towards, yeah, it was like towards the front, I guess.
On the right hand side.
On the right hand side, it was the way he had them numbered, it was the front right corner.
So there is a.
One right near the detention pot.
I think it was that, I think it was that, to be accurate.
One with the fishing from the back.
There you go. It's a bonus.
Well.
It's a big pond.
The, we're going to need six votes. How are you feeling, Frank?
I don't think I have enough information from.
What additional information could they provide?
I guess, and I wish I thought of this earlier, I don't mean to hold things up, but we got feedback from Parks and Rec on the solar farm idea. If we have some people from the Housing Authority maybe get way in on what they see is a need, do what do we need more, do we need more housing, or do we need money to build housing?
Well, at this point, we know what the numbers are as soon as the building permit is taken out from Muse. We will hit over 10, we're at 14%. We will be over 10% at the time of the 2026.
For affordable housing, right.
For affordable. So we are talking about potentially 2029 is just potentially being an issue for the town.
And you have $150,000 in the bank now, and this would put an additional 203 in there.
Over 15 years.
No, over, over 15 sales, or however we end up.
Occupancy permits.
And there's another, maybe $300,000 in the pipeline.
Yeah, I mean, there will be some more money put into this account from other projects. I mean, we don't, I mean, at 14%, we don't necessarily need affordable housing now as mandated by the state.
Mr. Chair, my position is, generally, I prefer that you guys have the unit on-site, but given the fact that we don't need the unit for another 12, 13 years, why not put that money in, 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 in the kitty? That way you've got additional funds, you're not in a position where we're forced to do anything to meet the need, because we're already above the threshold, just move on.
As a point of clarification, does unit 18 still being built, or?
Yeah.
So, so it will be built. It's going to be built.
We've got the brother now, it's affordable.
And that's the part, I'm, I'm, I just, I don't, I don't feel comfortable owning either way, so I don't mean, if there are other people here, it would be less of an issue, so I don't mean to be hanging things up.
So, I guess I'd entertain from you, Frank, a motion to table this request.
How official, do we, do we invite other boards to comment, or do we just seek out more information on our own?
Well, this is really our, our issue. Like me.
Mr. Jim, it's just a thought, you have so little money in your kitty right now, you may want to consider, especially where you've got the luxury of looking ahead to 2020, to actually, for a few projects, consider taking the cash to build up enough critical mass. So if you get to a point, for instance, where you've got a million dollars, let's say in that account, you could actually have enough cash with the proper financing to actually build something of credible size, you know, to create enough critical mass. The $100,000, you really can't do anything. So until you get enough cash, that money's sort of sitting there wasted. So you might want to consider taking cash for a period of time to create enough cash to actually do something realistic.
It's not at that point, because if you can get the land at a fairly low cost, because it's town land.
You'd be very competitive.
Then you're in a place where you can, to your point, Roy.
You know, you can take the million dollars, partner with a, you know, like we did with the Muse or Legacy. You can put some infrastructure in, you know, you build the road, I mean, you know, you can get there.
You can make a big number.
And, and at 2027 or so, we're going to know how many units we need. It's not going to be a big number. I don't, I don't predict it to be a big number.
If you have a million bucks plus low-cost land, you could actually make a decent.
Put in, put in a dozen or two dozen units, and it's, and it's a good project, and you're still over 10% for another.
Another 10 years.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the four units at a time. Yeah, it's, it's, it's the four units at a time, projects that, you know...
The nickel and dimes.
They keep, you know, they add to it, or 19 adds one, you know, it's...
I agree, I like that, I like the train of thought there.
But, but I mean, Zach could, Zach could look at it as a cost on every unit, too, you know, I'll say affordable housing tax type of thing, too, which then might make it just more expensive to live in Hopkinton, but it's, but at least it would be, we'd keep it closer to our 10 percent. But I'm, well, maybe it's just because it's 2029, I'm not terribly worried about it. But Frank, it's up to you, because otherwise, we want to move on.
No pressure.
Am I the only one that needs more information, or?
I think everyone else, I'm looking, I think everyone else...
Although I'm in favor of a unit, having a single unit that's not close to downtown, in that case, I'd rather have, build up the funds to be able to build something where there's more of an infrastructure. One of the things I did was ask someone to population shift, and our town is getting older, the 55 and over population in 2000, 2013 is projected off by 50 percent. So I think having an isolated unit not close to downtown doesn't really serve the purpose. I'd rather get funds together, and we can do something downtown and service the people who need it better.
That's, that's, that's what I'm thinking, so I guess I'd be in support of this.
Okay, I think we're ready for a vote, and the vote is to approve the change to the payment in lieu of a unit with the following conditions, the conditions are on page two of Elaine's memo, have you guys seen those at all? Basically, let me run through it. Contribute to the Hopkinton Affordable Housing Trust on a lieu of constructing or providing affordable housing unit on or off-site. Fees are calculated by the guidelines below, and the timing of payments will be the following schedule. Calculated amount divided by 15, payment will be made prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the first 15 units in the development. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the change in lieu of, with those conditions.
No, moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, further discussion? Seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstained? Motion carries, six votes. So that's the first issue. The second issue was changing the connection.
So I don't know how clear it shows up there, so...
We probably should have brought a larger poster of what it was, but...
Yeah, so, I guess it's the, I want to go up a point because I can't see it, but in between the units, we had a couple of connectors, it only occurs a handful of times in the development, it might...
I just did a little quick sketch.
Small out, but the issue that we realized that some of the buyers were coming to us with was, this was going to be an enclosed area, so if you wanted to go into your backyard or get something done around the back, you would have to walk around potentially several buildings to get all the way around.
These people here would have had to walk all around.
Right, you would have had to walk around several buildings, so now these are just more like, kind of pass through open areas.
They're duplexes connected with a connector, basically.
They're going up to the site now, and you see, you know, a lot of the structures, if you put the connectors, you're going to have 400-plus feet of one continuous building, where this breaks it.
There's no doors or anything, it's just to kind of walk through the backyard.
It's walk, yeah.
I like it, right, because it creates a little bit more openness there, it kind of separates the, the units out.
Yeah. The, our bylaw requires multifamily units.
Attached.
Attached units. Is the minimum of how many, or what, I'm trying to remember.
Up to 10 percent of the units could be detached, and the rest have to be attached, so duplexes or more, but, so this is a, an attachment, the building inspector's okay with this.
And the attachment requires foundation and roof structure.
Which would have, and which would attract, what's the roof structure, right?
Okay, when I was out there today, I don't remember seeing the concrete.
There's nothing there, yeah, because we, we were waiting to find out.
Figure out what you're going to do, so you will put some kind of concrete.
Full foundations filled, capped, and then have some kind of stone on top.
Okay. Did design review look at this? No.
No.
But this is relatively minor. Any board members have comments, questions?
Personally, I think it makes a lot of sense for the very reason of inconveniencing those folks that are, you know, in the middle there, having to, you know, skirt all the way around. Additionally, I think it does, in your rendering, it looks, it looks a little better, a little more open and not as dense.
Okay, and if I remember, the first four or seven are like, kind of all there on the one side, and then...
On the left side is where the issue's really the most apparent.
Then there's just one connector on the right side.
On the right side, and the rest are duplexes.
Yeah, right. In one standalone.
In one standalone, yeah, it's, which gets you to 19, I think, correct?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
We can make it 19.
Oh, I see.
You want to give us that all there?
I see, I see, that's right, this one has the extra one on the end. Okay, so I hear, I hear your sales are going very nicely.
Yeah, we have a number of reservations in, purchase and sales, yes.
Good start.
Good start.
Projects is a good one, man.
Look for a motion to...
The changes.
Change the site plan for the open connectors.
So moved.
Seconded.
Is that motion significant or sufficient?
Yeah, just to approve the change.
Approve the change, okay. Moved and seconded, further discussion, seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Thank you very much.
May I just add, what's better than cash? More cash.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I knew you'd ask.
Okay. Okay, next, I think, Roy, you're up.
Thank you very much. We're here to discuss with you a minor change we would like to make. We've already been through Concom, and I think they saw the wisdom in it. I think you may have all received these plans, but you're pretty plain, let's try to shoot back up. So this, this is in the site, if you're coming in from Franklin, it's probably two-thirds of the way through the site. If you drive in, it's maybe a quarter of a mile before you get to Wilson Street. There's an area where there's a pond on one side, I don't think any of you have driven through, and there's a culvert that goes from where the pond is across the road with two fairly substantial wing walls on each side of the culvert. Further up the road, there were originally proposed to retain...
Is the culvert in yet?
It is.
Okay.
Further up the road, not too far away, were proposed two additional retaining walls, not very high actually, they were about three and a half to four feet tall, for a fairly significant distance, and the general feeling was, number one, because of the grades that are actually in the field, in the lack of wetlands where one might thought there were wetlands, and the fact of this sort of linear tunnel vision effect with two long walls and two more long walls, we, we thought it would look aesthetically much more appealing, and I think the Conservation Commission did also, where we would leave the walls where the culvert is, we've asked to eliminate the two walls that are further up and do a grassed and landscaped vegetated edge, sort of a two-to-one slope, which actually you can see here, the green areas are, the green areas are the two-to-one slope, and the gray areas are a small segment of stone riprap. And what that would do is, as you're driving through, you would feel more connected to the vegetation on either side, and as you went further along, you would see the pond, and then eventually go across the bridge where the culvert is with those retaining walls. So the request is to eliminate these two walls, do the vegetated shoulders, and this small amount of riprap slope.
How high above the road is the...
Say again?
How high above the grade is the road?
It varies anywhere from three to four feet, so it's, it's about this high.
It's not too high.
And I think we got a recommendation from Beta that said they were comfortable with it, and there was really no increase to the wetland resource areas, or maybe it's a couple of square feet less.
Is this part of the walk on Saturday?
I'm sorry, say again?
There's a walk through here on Saturday, was this part of it?
Yes.
Sorry, I missed it.
Any comments, questions? Motion to approve the plan for the subdivision road construction.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, further discussion? Seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Before you go, we're going to talk about Rafferty Road interchange next week.
I don't have a date for that yet, we never have data from before.
Okay.
I was hoping we would.
I'm hoping we will.
I'm waiting to hear.
Okay.
I'll get in touch with him tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Because we got to set the agenda, because that's a short fuse, so we'd like to, like to try to do that next week.
I spoke to Phil last week, and he said he was working on it, so I'm hoping he will have it for next meeting.
Okay.
We could also need to go to the, we met with the tree ward now on the site, because I'm sure if you walked in, you'll see there are numerous trees that need to come down to get the sidewalk in.
Is Rafferty Road, is Simms Road?
Yes.
I don't think Rafferty is, it's just Wilson.
I think Rafferty is true.
Do you think, do you think so?
Mm-hmm.
Really? I don't know where that...
I thought Rafferty was already logged with the trees.
I'm sorry, was that?
Nobody's really done anything there before.
Oh, I didn't know that was... They're going to advertise that in the next couple of weeks, of next week or so, I guess it needs to be advertised for two weeks, and I think they're going to be, we've categorized all the trees as about 100, and five or 10 trees need to be taken down, between the full length of Rafferty and the widening of Cedar.
In the right of way, or just in general?
I would say the majority of it's probably in the right of way, some of it's on the east one we have with Eversource.
So we have that hearing jointly with the tree ward and all that?
Yeah, we already did.
Okay, so we will be taking that up, and Elaine, you talked to Eversource today about a poll that is kind of, this is kind of John Corler's email, similar subject.
I'm sorry, which poll?
The poll in the middle of Franklin, that's...
Oh, I had a meeting with them out there in the field today, and I've met with Eversource and with Verizon.
Are you getting any help?
They actually got so far as to put two stakes in the ground.
As to where the new one goes?
Yeah, two, now they want two poles.
Oh.
They said that because the, the distances between two poles is 170 feet, and the other two poles, 100, excuse me, 200 feet, so now instead of having that, they want to have two new poles rather than one new pole to split the distances up.
Okay.
So I asked them how quickly they can get on it, because we want to get that road paved. I mean, John Westling is making it very clear, from East Main Street to Franklin Road, where it goes up the hill, we want to get that paved as soon as humanly possible. Problem is, that pole's right in the middle of the street.
Yep.
So I've expressed that to them in very strong terms, they said now they're going to go back to engineering, now that they've got the stakes in the ground, and hopefully get back to us soon.
Okay, good luck. We'll be seeing you soon, I'm sure, on this one or Rafferty Road.
Well, we also, we also have a work order going for one pole on Cedar Street, where we're doing the widening on Route 85. That seems to be moving along, because they actually came out and painted the pole, which is a good thing.
Painting the pole does...
Well, they put the word Verizon on it, means that they actually went out and saw it.
So they...
So we have a work order number for that one.
Okay.
That's going to go back four feet.
Okay. Poles are the most frustrating thing I think this board ever has to even remotely deal with, but anyway, good luck.
We stay on top of them all the time.
Okay.
To the point where I think they're tired of hearing from us. Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. By the same, Elaine also got us triggered because the poll at Paul's project on Lumber Street, he's having a hard time getting their attention, so we were assisting on that, I think. So, let's see, we're, we are almost back on schedule. We are ready for, I guess, the library at this point, if they're ready. Are you, Dan, are you ready for us, or?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay.
Yeah, what?
We're up.
Yep.
Before we get started, we're down a few members today, we got six. It's always your option whether, you know, as the way I see it, Dan, we're probably not going to complete today because of the parking issues still, while making a lot of progress isn't there, but we can make, we could get through, I'll say, the rest of all the detailed discussion, I'm hoping to get through that at least today, and then finish it up with a short meeting the next time.
Really?
That's, that's where I'm seeing it.
If Claire misses a meeting, can she vote next night?
She can watch the video, so both she and Brian can watch, and Fran can watch the August meeting.
I did.
Oh.
So...
Just kidding, I'm okay.
So, anyway, it's up to you.
Yeah, I'd like to just keep plowing through it and get this thing done.
So would we.
Okay.
So, basically, I'm reopening the continued public hearing for the site plan review and special permit for off-site parking for the library at 13 Main and 9 Church Street. As we last left it, we were halfway through the detailed discussion items, I've heard from Elaine, and I've heard from a couple other people, that the town is making progress on a shared parking agreement with the St. John's Church.
Yes, that's true.
And that would probably make that issue go away, provided that things are written in a reasonable way, and from what I understand, Ray is off writing a draft. Or maybe it's right now.
I think the draft has already been written, and it's, the church had a couple of comments, and that's being reviewed now.
Okay.
But how, how far does, does the plan want, would it want to sign documents?
Well, a letter in ten, but that's what we've, we usually have...
Something in writing indicating that it's either done or nearly done.
We can write a...
It's a grant of special permission.
I think we want to know the essence of the conditions, for sure, and then, what did we have on the cultural arts? We had a signed, we had a signed agreement for that one.
Right.
And I think the other ones, we've had signed agreements, if I remember correctly.
Well, there's written agreements.
Written agreements.
Okay.
So, but it sounds like that issue is well on its way of being resolved. I'm presuming that, that what is written is there, but I mean, it's, I think it meets most of the criteria that requires for, for that, but, but maybe I'm getting ahead of myself because I haven't read anything yet, but I'm presuming that...
We gave it to you on time, I think, didn't we?
Okay, so, I think where we are is, we received a revised set of plans since the last meeting, which kind of incorporated everything up to date, and we've also received a letter from Beta that I think basically says everything is pretty well closed out on their issues, so I think if we plunge through the, the detailed review, we'll make a lot of progress, and then we'll, the last one, we can just get to the final conditions, and this is assuming we have parking, and, and get ready to vote approve. Okay, so I think we left off, we finished signing signage, landscaping, we had an action item, I think, for some trees into the plan, was that how we left?
It's in the plan, yeah.
And the plan has the trees in it, I believe, and I think everyone's here to review that, so I'm taking H off the outline.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Jim...
Tim Wonka, eight, eight and row.
Yep.
So my question is, on the south side of the property, the proposal is to have thorny, I believe it's thorny honey locust planted. And in the planting design, I read that those trees are slated to be three to three and a half inches in diameter. There is no height listed. Nor would I know what the width of those trees would be either.
You have somebody that can kind of educate us all on that?
Yeah, just, I'll just point out the south side. Last time we were here, we had a plan that had four honey locusts, and we increased it to six, so one, two, three, four, five, six. And typically, unless it's a, an evergreen, they're measured in caliper, so it's on the planting list numbered, and they're three to three and a half caliber. Typically, they're six to eight feet planted at that caliber. And this is, basically, this is what a honey locust looks like there. So it's a broad-leaved tree, which is different than the ones on the back, which are the evergreen, the Emerald Aubrey.
So honey locust gets to be about so many feet when it starts to mature more?
Yeah. Yeah. These are obviously much taller than.
Well, these are mature height. You're looking at, you know, a number of years down the road before it gets up to, you know, 15, 20 feet tall.
Mr. Chairman, what I've read about the honey locust is, A, they're a tree that's sometimes considered a weed. They, they don't get their foliage till very late in the spring. They have a tendency, in windstorms, once they do get more mature, the branches break off. So I would, I would request that the plan be reconsidered to look at a different type of species of tree.
Unfortunately, we're missing Claire, who seems to be our tree expert here.
Are there other options?
Yeah, the honey locust was picked specifically because of the root system and the location of it. You can put maples in it, you can put oaks in it. They're appropriate for parking areas. So, you know, as a landscape architect, that's what was recommended. Is it a project where my landscape architect's going to get all upset if you change the trees? No, it's really up to the client, and going back and forth. Our recommendation, this was an appropriate planting for this location.
And I think I'd have to go, we're not experts on trees, and we hire, we hire experts, we hire landscape architects, and this is what they're recommending, so I'd hate to just change it based on.
I think if anything, it's an action item to maybe relook at, at whether honey locust is what you recommend. Scott, do you remember what the tree is over at 77 Main Street?
Bradford pears.
Bradford pears? Are they appropriate next to a parking lot? Because they do keep the leaves on fairly long and.
They're not bad, you know? I mean, they get pretty bulk, and it's good for, I don't know, you run that by, you can run that by a landscape architect, but.
Yeah, it could. I mean, that lot is broad, and they're.
Yeah, the honey locust is a pretty prevalent shade-type tree, planted tree, in both suburban and urban areas. It's pretty hardy, and.
Why don't we take it this way? Elaine, can you contact our tree warden and ask for his opinion on a honey locust? And if he's not too keen on it, then get with Dan and say, hey, come up with another, an alternate?
Okay.
If I could just ask, is there a specific species that you have seen that you would like, like a, something you could recommend, rather than going back and forth later?
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm not a tree expert either. I only did my reading on it. The other concern I have is, you know, if they're only, I'm sorry, Dan, what did you say, the height, nine, nine feet?
The initial planting height, probably something around there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was, I was hoping for some better screening. I mean, if it's nine feet, the canopy of the tree is not going to be very wide, and I was hoping for at least some initial better screening.
Okay, I think that's going to be initially, regardless of what species we select. We can only plant a certain size tree.
Yeah, and I'm not looking to be difficult either. I mean.
No, no.
You know, I'm here, I'm available, you know? If, you know, you want to have a call with the landscape architect, I can, you know?
Okay.
Okay, let's, any other issues?
No, no.
On that, sir?
While we're on the screening, I'm Jeff Hadley for Hayden Row. I'm also kind of, first of all, the additional arborvitaries are greatly appreciated on the east side of the addition. I was just going to request, in the plan, new plan, it says they're seven to eight feet, and I think once they're planted, that will be kind of right at the top of the fence, and I'm worried that if they're not a little taller, they won't get any sun, and they might not thrive as well, so if they could go to eight to 10 feet or something, that would provide us a little better screening, plus maybe give them a better chance to survive, getting a little more light, so just a request.
You can also ask the tree warden of concerns about shading on those, just to figure out where it is. I mean, those things will grow like a weed, I believe. Yeah, my neighbor's got some that are higher than their house.
Yeah, they go pretty quickly.
Yeah, and feed a year, I think, if I remember right.
Yeah, and the concern that our landscape architect brought up was that the bigger we plant them initially, the less chance it's going to survive, higher mortality rate with the bigger trees, so.
I would have thought the opposite, so I don't know.
Yeah. And you want to, you don't want to go in and try to bring equipment in to bring a replacement tree in either, because that's pretty tight back there. In fact, I think it's kind of almost boxed out of a corner.
Yeah. It's tight back there.
You want these to last.
Right.
I mean.
So the fence is six foot, these are specified to be seven to eight.
So they're a couple of feet above.
A footer to a year after that, but putting them in larger than that is problematic.
Since you were already calling up the tree warden, just ask his opinion.
Just a clarification, is the seven to eight feet above the ground, or?
Above, above the ground, above the root ball, yeah.
So that would give it above.
Yeah.
Now, those are of substantial size.
Larger than we typically.
For arborvitaries, for arborvitaries.
Okay, are we done with landscaping neighborhood buffers and existing trees off the outline? Looks like we are. Okay, the next was stormwater management. And Elaine, there was only one item that was confusing on the Beta one. I'm not sure whether it was stormwater, I think it was. Most of these all say issue resolved, which is in the last memo, which I congratulate you on, because we're not going to spend a lot of time. I think it's on page eight. The top one, SW 18.
If you have to clarify whether the source data was provided, maybe just this wasn't updated.
Oh, yeah, no, it was all provided.
I think it just, they didn't update this.
That's what I was seeing when I looked at his.
Yeah.
Other piece.
He's actually, worked out before the last meeting, and then we just gave all the information afterwards.
So, so basically, from, I'm looking at, unless there are other questions on stormwater, I think you've met all the requirements of our consulting engineer. Board members have any questions? Public have any questions on stormwater? All set?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, go ahead.
How, I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at the memo, and how is the water being handled? Is it, is there recharging occurring?
Yes.
And is that recharging located where on the property?
In the parking lot.
Yeah, it's in the middle of the parking lot.
It's underneath the parking lot.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And then the overflow, if I remember, and then I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, goes into the storm sewer?
Correct. There's an overflow that goes into the Church Street underground system.
Okay, good. Memory's getting a little short these days. Okay, stormwater's closed out. Utilities? Trying to remember. Obviously, they're all available.
Yeah, water's coming off of Main Street, Church Street, at the intersection is where this gravity sewer line's going to go into. All the overhead wires are not part of this project, they're all going underground to a transformer and into the building.
So basically, everything's going to go underground.
Everything's underground, yeah, and services on the street are adequate.
And the transformer, as much as you can, we've got a screening plan for that?
Yeah, that was one of the changes. Actually, completely enclosed in this, here's a dumpster, a recycling, a transformer.
Okay, so it's all in?
All enclosed.
All enclosed. That's an interesting concept, that's right, but I think I like that potential concept, because we always had the problem with the, with the screening utility boxes.
Yes, yeah.
And this is the first time, I think, we've seen it that way.
As long as the door opens wide enough for N-Star or Eversource.
Well, you take the dumpster out, and then you've got plenty of room.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, yes, sir.
Mike Rowan, six, eight and row. How do you get to the back area if you've got a structure that has a dumpster and a transformer right there?
The grayish area going up and down is a sidewalk, so you'd be able to go across through the sidewalk and then take a left onto.
So that's the only access back there?
Correct.
So you can't get any equipment other than a lawn mower back there?
Correct.
You're looking at, that's what, 15 feet, something? I forget what the back's at.
Fifteen, yeah, it was 15 feet.
From the property line, and you're going to have a bunch of bushes, so yeah, you're going to do it with that, these type of.
Yeah, there's no reason to bring a ride mower or anything back there.
And I'm sorry to, but I know you closed out stormwater, but all of the water's going to run off that roof, going to run into that back area. Is there a catch basin back there?
Yeah, there's a catch basin, all the roofs collected by a closed hiding system and brought this way. Does it catch basin in this area? And anything that's coming, what's happening now is the water's coming down. Any of this area that's going to collect it is going to go through a catch basin, it's got a four-foot sump and a hood, brings everything down in this direction, and then infiltration systems over here. So nothing's going in that direction at all.
Roof drains are all?
All internal, underground.
Do board members or public have anything more on utilities? Next one, I'm trying to remember what the zoning compliance on the lot?
Mr. Rowan has some.
Okay. The questions on zoning compliance were?
Like the setbacks, and basically.
Well, I guess fundamentally, my question is, is, are you reviewing one lot or two, two lots?
We're reviewing this as, as a combined lot. We will require a condition that it will be combined.
That'll be a statement of condition?
Yes.
And the purpose for a combined lot is to?
Well, you've got a building that goes across the property line.
To make it a corner lot?
Whether it makes it a corner lot or not, when you put a building across the property line, you usually combine the lots. And they could do that anytime, they could bring that plan in at our next meeting, and then they would get the condition, but I mean, it's, and it's, it's called an approval not required, an ANR plan, and we don't have any other ANR plans on our agenda tonight, but we've had some in the last couple of meetings, and if we don't approve it, the town clerk has to approve it after, I think, 15 days.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one days, so.
There was some question whether we actually needed planning board's signature for that, because we're combining lots, not subdividing.
So they could go into the registry with, it's called the 81X plan.
Okay.
I guess, just from a legal basis, if you're taking two lots and you're combining them, but you're, in combining them, you're relieving the requirement of a rear yard setback. That's, that puts me in aggrieved person status, from what I've been told, so. I don't know if there's any other condition in which you've combined two lots in the town of Hopkinton for corner lot, but there are conditions in other towns that have done that, that have been adversely impacted the butters.
Seventy-seven West Main, most recently, seventy-seven West Main, most recently, that was combined with Wood Lumber.
Yes. We did that at this point. In the last six months. I, you know, as the, whether it's aggrieved or what it is, you know, I don't have the, or I don't think anyone in this board has his own lawyer experience. I mean, some days we play one on Monday nights on local TV, but, you know, that's, that's something else. But Elaine, I believe there's some other decisions where the town is found on corner lots?
Well, if it's in a, you know, the building inspector determines what's a corner lot and so forth. And so they've determined that for corner lots, going by the zoning by law, that it's two fronts and two sides, and that's, that's how it's interpreted. Whether, you know, a lot is a corner lot depends on if a street is there. So, you know, we've had lots of instances where people constructed buildings on sites, and they combined lots. For instance, 42 Main is going to be a combination of three lots together on both Walcott and Main Street. It's just the way the land, the land is, the sites that people have. And you really don't want a building that's going across the property line, you can't meet the setbacks. If you're going across the property line, you have to go to the board and appeals for a variance from the setback requirements. So it's very common for lots to be created, and plus, the parking will be on a separate lot, if it's not combined as well. So the building as proposed, the lot does meet the setback requirements for a corner lot.
Okay. I think that's consistent with where we've been operating. Like you said, it's an appealable offense, once we're ready to decision, if that's, you so take it that way, or is?
Well, you're not making a plan, but it's not making a decision on whether it's a corner lot. We're just doing a site plan review at this point.
No, you are absolutely making it based on it being a corner lot.
We're proving it, saying it's in zoning compliance, based on what our truck did. I mean, because that's what the back is, I think.
You need to state that in your.
The board, one of the boards.
Your decision.
But you'll determine whether it meets the site plan standards, which is, the zoning requirements have been met.
Yeah.
No, okay.
Well, I strongly ask that you state that it's a corner lot, that you're basing it on the combined lots being a corner lot.
Next one is very, any other comments on this zoning compliance? Next one.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah.
I did review the bylaws and tried to understand what the term structure and how it's defined in the bylaws. And I really couldn't get a clear definition.
Structure meaning?
Transformer?
Transformer.
Typically, if it doesn't need a building permit, it's not a structure. But that being said, the zoning enforcement officer, the building inspector determines whether it meets the building code, whether it requires a structure, whether it's a structure or not under the building code.
To build a fence, you normally don't need a building permit.
So I guess my question is more in regards to the parking lot, the parking lot area, where you're now building stormwater recharge. The parking lot is there to support or protect that recharge, so would that be considered a structure at that point?
Parking lots are not structures.
If the parking lot wasn't there, the parking lot wasn't paved?
Recharge would work just as fine, maybe even better.
But you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to then drive cars? But you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to then drive cars on the recharge, is that?
You can drive cars on the recharge.
So there, I, there was no clear definition in the bylaws that I saw that parking lots were excluded as a structure?
Typically, we've seen driveways and parking go right up to the property line, or a lot of our bylaws for, in commercial areas, require a setback from that landscape buffer.
Thank you.
But other than that landscape buffer, it's, it's not part of the structure setback as practiced in Hopkinton.
Streets and parking lots are not structures under the building code.
Other questions, comments? On zoning compliance, combining the lots, is your intention to, to do that sometime soon?
Yes, yep. We just had an update from our architect who contacted the surveyor, so that's coming shortly.
Okay.
So there's a question whether we're gonna go straight to the registry with eighty-one X, or we're gonna come to you with a?
Whichever is easiest. We'll write a condition that requires the lots to be combined, I think, before issuance of a building permit, which we've done a couple of times. Other questions, comments on combining lots? What's your schedule for construction?
We are, um, going out to bid in November with an award probably the end of January. And then construction would start, at that point, depending on the weather.
So, first part of March time, probably.
Yeah, yeah. And maybe, you know, maybe we can demo the nine Church Street building during the winter, but?
Sure.
Construction in earnest probably wouldn't start until March.
Question through the chair?
Go ahead.
Is, um, nine Church occupied now as an income property still, or is that?
No, it's, it's vacant now.
I think this is a good project and everything, but one question I have is, before we expanded the library, we could barely afford to keep it open hours we wanna keep it open. And then now we're spending all this money expanding it, then our income to run the library is being demolished, and it's gonna cost us a lot more money to run this bigger building. So I thought we were thinking about solar panels on the roof and the ways to keep electrical costs down and things like that, so the building would be more efficient to operate as, uh, more affordable to operate. You know, it's more of an outlay of money at the beginning to do the solar panels. Is, is that completely off the table now, or?
I believe so. I don't think, we, we, did we look at solar and it really wasn't applicable to this particular building?
We looked at it. We don't have a lot of roof surface. Am I me answering?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Um, we, we looked at solar. We don't have a lot of roof surface that could, that could support the, um, a system, so we were looking at a system that was reasonably small. Also, we don't have a lot of slope roofing that's facing in the right direction that we could utilize because of the way the building is designed. Um, we, we did think about it a little bit more during the study phase when we had a larger building, uh, when we, when we went through this more recent design process where we pulled the building down in scale. Um, we, we have a lot of usable space that's actually up underneath that slope portion of the roofing, and we don't have a lot of room up there, um, anymore because of that. And so really, the only system we could do would be up on the high portion of the roof, uh, and they would all have to be cantilevered up at at least thirty degrees, and so they'd all stick up. Historic District Commission wasn't all that happy about that either, and it, and it kind of chops into the sky. It's not really nice looking. Um, and because the system was so small, uh, it didn't, it wasn't really, it wasn't really doing a lot. We were looking at a system that, that may, in sunny weather, do less than five percent of your, your electricity. And so we are still pursuing lead certification for the building. The building is gonna be, um, green and sustainable, but that's just not one of the strategies that we're pursuing as part of that.
And not to belabor the point, but Scott Richardson's behind you. He's one of our leading green guys, right? Is a, does that match with your perception?
Uh, yes. In review, during the design phase, uh, again, as the footprint got smaller and just the configuration of the roof system didn't really seem to work to support the solar panel installation. However, we are going with a geothermal, uh, heating and cooling system, which will definitely be more affordable to operate, uh, for the, for the library.
I know we're on good hands with you guys. I just needed to ask, so thank you.
Okay. Going on further on construction conditions, it looks like you're gonna be building through a marathon season. So Elaine, maybe you wanna prepare a condition that we talk about? No roadway impacts, was it one or two weeks before the marathon, or just, just two weeks before?
Yeah, I think we already have that worked into our construction bid documents.
Okay.
That, that window, that, is it no, no work or limited work, or?
I think the intent was to come up with language that would suit the town's needs.
Okay.
Relative to restrictions, whether it's road line restrictions or property line resist, you know, we just need to get that defined, so it's displayed in the documents correctly.
Obviously, that Monday, no.
Yeah, no work.
No work on that Monday, 'cause, but, but typically, we have a requirement that nothing in the street gets disturbed two weeks before, so that if there was a pothole problem?
Right.
We, the town DPW would have time to, to emergency fix it. That, I think the essence of our typical condition, where we are on the route or?
Okay.
Close enough. Okay. Other construction issues? I mean, we have some typical, you know, Dowell, Berry crap on the line, you know. Dan, you've seen our typical ones.
Yep.
You used to impose them, I think, when you were on this board. Don't have very, very much since. Okay. If, if there's any other, no other questions on construction and schedule, we'll close that one out as consensus. Dumpster hours and screening, I think Elaine already put a proposed condition for dumpster, no dumpsters should be emptied before eight AM or after five. That's what I think Elaine was proposing.
Sounds pretty simple.
So during the day. Any other comments, questions on dumpsters? Okay. Think Elaine has got a condition, which we do fairly typical, if the amount exceeds what you can store on the site, you gotta get rid of it, which is?
Right.
Typically what DPW is storing there for most of downtown anyway.
And I think we're in that position here. We're gonna be hauling off snow on, on large, on large snowstorms. There's no, no way, two ways about it.
Other questions, comments on snow storage? And we will, I guess Elaine already has a draft condition for that. Okay, we're getting closer. Handicapped access ramp? There was some last questions, I think, when we put this on, as to whether or not the ramp, there was changes going on with the ramp up on our first set of meetings? And I think we have?
It's?
We have it finalized?
We have it finalized now. It's, it's slightly different than what we showed Historic District, so we're gonna go back and show them the final plan.
Okay. We got a copy of, I think in our package this time, we got a copy of the Historic District approval, and it wasn't a hundred percent clear to me that it was that significantly different.
It really isn't.
I mean, from, from what they approved, I mean, they, they were doing a conceptual, I don't know. But going back to them, probably make Claire and others more happier than not.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
It might be the easiest.
Path of least resistance.
It might be a half an hour meeting that makes it, your life that much easier. I don't know. 'Cause, 'cause I mean, here it didn't, you know, didn't show much in a way of detail and?
No. As long as you don't have handrails, that's the big, that was the big thing.
And you got, you got rid of the handrails, so that's?
Right, no, no handrails.
Other questions on handicapped access ramp? Okay. Bike rack. You got a bike rack now somewhere on the property?
Same, same bike rack that we had before, but we just moved the location.
Okay. Right there, there. Anyone have questions, comments on bike rack?
I want to thank Elaine again for her heads up on, uh, letting us know there's a grant available to get the bike racks. So it's good to know that's still part of the library going forward.
Seeing no other comments, questions on bike racks. I think we're down to the last hours of operations and activities, and changes to the hours in the library?
No, we expect to remain the same, because we are maintaining our operating hours by our operations side, so we are there.
Okay. Other than maybe some of the off-hours in the, if the meeting room is used in the evening, might extend your hours a little bit?
Yeah, and, and the lab is closed off from that, so it means?
So that wouldn't be a library use, that would be a separate use?
No, but it's, I mean, it's this, this complex from our oper- operations.
Yeah. So would, would we be expecting a condition on, on hours of operation from, on a site plan review?
I don't think so for this type of?
Okay, all right.
I mean, I don't view it as a noxious use, or anyone that?
It's an exist, it's existing use, is what it is, yeah.
And, and even with the, the meeting room, I mean, you know, you're not gonna have meetings at eleven o'clock at night, I don't think.
No.
'Cause nobody's gonna come. It's only the planning board that meets till ten.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yes.
I believe when we did talk about the lighting and, and the hours of lighting operation, that, that this was one of the topics brought up, where, where it was, I thought, agreed that lights would be off at eleven.
That's correct. We, we, we have a proposed condition. Site lighting shall be off one hour following closing of the building to the public, with the exception that no case shall, in, that in no case shall light, site lighting beyond after eleven PM. This condition shall not apply to lighting necessary for public safety and security and required by the building code, meaning you can still have your little porch light on, you know, as required. But basically, parking lot lights would come off at eleven at that condition.
All right, so for the safety of the public, then I would think there would be some sort of restrictions on when even the meeting room could be used up until a certain time?
I would think you would probably schedule it no later than like ten-thirty-ish or?
Yeah.
Quarter to eleven, 'cause you gotta get empty the parking lot out by that, by eleven.
Yeah, you know?
Close the building.
Absolutely, right. I just didn't wanna have restrictions on the library. If they wanted to change their hours on Saturday until three or four o'clock instead of two?
If, if anything, it would be something like to eleven from?
Right.
Seven to eleven or something.
Yeah.
Seven in the morning to eleven or some, if, if, I don't know. I don't know what the, the board feels if we need a restriction on this. I don't really, I'm not crazy about it. No? I'm sensing, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that?
Yeah.
The library's gotta be the quietest use ever, huh?
Is there an issue now? I mean, it won't really change, the hours are the same. When TV King comes, that's a different thing, but?
Okay. If I kind of recap where it is, uh, we have, parking is the only major issue out, and we're kinda hoping that you come back with an agreement soon?
We are too.
And, and then there's the action item on the trees, but I think, I think that's got everything that we've covered. I mean, that, I think you're down to just a couple little things.
Yeah. Just to be clear on the parking, the, the library use itself doesn't have an issue. We can meet the requirements of the bylaw for the library use. What is being asked of us is to consider the, the meeting room and the library as main uses. That's gonna happen at the exact same time.
Correct.
And that's where we run into problems.
That's where you, I, I think that's correct.
And that's?
I, I don't, I don't remember the numbers exactly, 'cause quite frankly, I didn't get prepared tonight to look at those again.
Yeah.
Just, but I think you're in essence right, because you actually got probably twenty more spots than you currently have with the library use itself, or not twenty, but fifteen net or something, whatever you've got in the, you know, the staff parking and handicap spot. So you're, you're, and the library use of, by itself, in my opinion, you're better off than you are today.
We are. Yeah. But I think, I think considering a, a meeting use and a library use as main uses is a very high standard to be held to.
Well, except for Dan, I, I honestly think that ma, that meeting room is gonna be an asset to the community, and people are gonna use it.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and meetings start before the library closes at night, usually.
Yeah, but there, what, what you're, yeah, okay, all right.
And, and a guy is, a guy is, somebody gonna get the, you know, I mean, if it's a meeting use for, I don't know, it can be a library one, but, you know, it could be another town board or committee that ends up using it.
Right. But if, if it's a library use, then you, then the library's probably gonna be empty, 'cause people are gonna go into the meeting room.
I don't know. If it's children's hour, I'm still gonna be on the other side.
We'll get the piece of paper.
Yeah, we'll get the paper.
Okay. So what's, what, what is your thoughts of getting back the shared parking agreement? Do we schedule you for next week to try to finish this up, or, or the, or next meeting after that? 'Cause I think Ray's off on vacation most of next week.
Yes. Elaine, is Norman going all week this week?
He's back Wednesday.
He's gonna be back on Wednesday? Okay. So you have a meeting next Monday?
Yes.
I think that's a little soon.
Could be, if you're looking for a signed agreement.
Yeah, church, Lord knows how long they're gonna take to, to get approval, but?
Yeah.
But actually, the priest has a lot of?
We couldn't, we couldn't accept that as a condition? That the meeting space wouldn't be used for non-library events until a signed agreement is in?
We could, we could, we could probably do something?
Okay.
Like that.
If, if the board had a draft, just?
You know, a draft.
A draft agreement?
Okay, all right.
So some evidence that there's, a belief that there will be an agreement.
All right. Is it proper to ask, since it's a town-owned property and a town agreement, is it proper to ask what the agreement is like so far, or is, is there any obstacles, or is it, is it just moving forward and no one's had the time to complete it yet?
I think that's what it is. I'm, I'm not even privy to the details that's been going on between the church and the town manager's office, so.
He was hoping to get in town and fix that.
I don't think it has to be approved by the pope. But there might be some question as to whether it has to be approved by the archdiocese as opposed to?
It may, it may have to, yeah. So that's why I'm saying it, it may take some time, but so if we could come in with a draft or something, and then accept a condition, then we can keep the library project moving So with that, I think, I guess I'd like to come back next Monday if we could.
Does that work for?
I don't see any other issues, do we?
How about if we? How about if we kind of double book it? Because if it's, or figure out a way?
It's tough, yeah.
'Cause, 'cause if you don't have something, I don't wanna look up, you know, I wanna?
If you could, if you could pencil us in, and if we don't have it by Thursday when Norman gets back, then?
We'll cancel it.
We'll, we'll push it back another week, or whatever the week is.
It'll be the nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
So it's not?
Okay.
You know, it's not that much further. You know, I haven't seen any intractable reasons not to approve it, but I'm, I'm speaking as one member of the board.
Okay.
I mean, you're under pros, you know. So Elaine, if we're doing it on the fifth, what time would you suggest?
So if you want to double book at seven-thirty, we could double book with thirty-four Hayden Row.
Thirty-four Hayden Row is gonna be a Donnybrook.
And, um, so you can take this up first and then have thirty-four Hayden Row after. So you can take these up first and then have 34 Hayden Row after.
Let me do it at 8:30. We're not doing anything else on the 5th, are we?
Master plans, yeah.
But that we can fill in.
Yep. And then we'll Rafferty if we have that.
We'll have Rafferty. Need to get Rafferty done. We'll double book Rafferty in this. And you'll fight it out before I move those first.
Okay.
But we really want to see at least a good draft of the agreement.
Okay.
Look for a motion to, because we also don't want to go forward and lose another couple of members here. We do need six to approve the special permits. We're getting dangerous so close to six.
Will the video be available in time for Claire to look at it?
Sure.
The, what else have I got to say? I guess I lost that train of thought. Oh, the other thing for the board members, we asked Ray, because the parking is going not from what we quite advertised, because it was advertised from behind here, it's going to the church. Ray's opinion was that we don't have to re-advertise and that's. So we're okay on that. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to continue the public hearing for the library, both of them, to the October 5th at 8:30 PM.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded for the discussion. Seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries. And there'll be, we will be starting off on item six, which is the, getting the last plans and revisions if needed. So we've got to solve trees by Thursday. Elaine? And then we'll go through conditions of approval. We have one more public comment period at the end, and then we'll probably be voting on it, if not this one, whenever the shared parking's there.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay. Now we're back on schedule here, kind of. Okay, Aspenok Woods. Good, come on down. Okay. Mavis, you want to get voted on?
No, I thought I'd stay on. Yes, I would.
Okay. Mavis has agreed on, somebody must have twisted her arm, to go on the zoning advisory committee again. She's a member of a large. And before we vote, thank you for volunteering. And so anyway, look for a motion to reappoint Mavis O'Leary to as a member of large, the zoning advisory committee.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
She's a former planning board member, right? Conservation commission?
Zach.
Zach.
Zach, she's been on Zach for two or three years, maybe more than that.
Longer than that, I think.
It's been a bunch, so.
I know you have some history, so.
There's a meeting tomorrow night at 7:00. So get sworn in once we vote you. All those in favor of Mavis O'Leary?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries. You're welcome, Mavis. Thank you. Okay, while he's setting up here, no, go ahead. Why don't you go ahead?
Hi, Bruce Wheeler from Aspenok Woods. We had designed a, a new plan. It's very similar to the other plans and it submitted to the building inspector for a building permit. He kicked it back to us and suggested that we speak to the planner and the planning board about it, which is what brings me here this evening. It's our E-plan or our Emily plan, and it has, this was one of the boards from our previous meetings. The Emily plan has very similar design and massing to our A-plan, but we, some of our building envelopes really called for a little bit more narrow structure in the front, but could handle a little bit wider structure in the rear. So that's effectively how the plan, from a floor plan standpoint, was revised and we gave it sort of a similar cape with dormer structure, but mixed up the dormer types just to give some additional diversity to the development.
So this adds another set?
It's a, it's a, it's a plan that, that we're adding to our, I guess, portfolio of plans that were, that were approved. We had an A, B, C, and D plan approved. The B-plan, we're actually not going to use. It was a different version of the, of the, of the A-plan, but the market sort of seems to prefer the A-plan, so we, there doesn't seem to be a need for it. It just was a, had a little bit different look to it. So we're wanting to add this plan to the, to our plan types in the development.
Elaine, did we show on the master plan which units go in each, which, which building can be of what type?
I think they're allowed to shift around. You approve the three unit types and, you know, they only, some of them only fit in certain locations.
Okay.
But, but they can mix and match and they're encouraged to mix them up.
Okay.
For variety.
I just could, could not remember any of the details on that. Questions, comments from the board? Did design review look at these at all?
They have not. They have not looked at these.
Looks like it's got most of the same elements.
It's not, and it's not a requirement. Designers are required or sends it there for advice, but it's not a required approval.
Anyone have any problem with approving this?
Just one question. How many potentially are we looking at?
Let me, so I have the site plan that we all were looking at with our original, when we were in originally, and then as we came up with this other design, we have labeled, so we have a revised site plan too, just to see how our thinking with unit type location has, has evolved. My left, your right is what we had in front of you originally and upside down.
So which one have we approved now?
This is what's, what we reviewed originally, which is what was approved. So what we found was that when we were wrapping around the circle.
I'm sorry, can you hold this the same way? Because that's really giving me distress.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was good luck on the side.
There we go. I apologize.
That's okay.
So is it there from a little bit farther back?
You're okay.
No, I see that, put that down, that's horizontal, and then that one should be vertical because the.
Oh, oh, I see, I see.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep, yep.
There you go.
Yeah.
That helps me.
They're all printed all sort of differently. So when we, when we were going around the circle, the footprints were tighter in the front and wider in the back, so, and to accommodate a large enough first floor for what the marketplace is looking for with the, with the master bedrooms down, we developed the E-plan.
Okay, so it looks like this Emily's down in the bottom and maybe went up at the top?
We, right now we have 1, 2, 3, 4 here, 5 and 6.
So there's no difference in square footage?
It's a little smaller than the A-plan, but it's a little bigger than the C-plan.
It's based on a dormer space, where you want to have the square footage footprint design, I'd say.
The total square, the foot, both the footprint and the total square footage would be between, the A would be the larger one, the E-plan would be second, and the C would be third, the D smallest.
So basically, you're asking us to, one, approve this revised plan, and to revise Avery plan and a new Emily plan?
I don't know. I think this is more just presentation-wise.
Okay.
I don't know. I, I didn't think that we, that this was necessary to be approved, but it was just, it was just more sharing information with the board as to, you know, what led to the thinking of the E-plan and how we're utilizing it, just.
This is the one we approved?
That's right.
But that's got A, B, and C all saved?
A, B, C, and D.
So, so, but you think we're allowed?
I think you allowed them to, to move around as necessary.
Okay. And what's the Avery plan changes? Something about a front porch to a study or?
Yes. If we, if we look at the front elevation, we'll see the, on the right side, we have a study in this front position. On the left, we have a porch, and it shows up a little bit better here. The overall size is quite similar. It's really just having the porch in this front position or a study, and everyone that's come in is interested in the study, so we thought it made more sense just to, and we didn't know in design until we started talking to people really what was going to be of interest. So our expectation in, we were, we were.
You approved both?
We approved both, but I think that what we're finding is that there's a lot more interest in, in the A-plan with the study versus the porch. And the building inspector had said, you know, gee whiz, this, both of these have studies, and I think he was looking for, we've since gotten the building permit, but he initially was just trying to sort out if that was okay.
Questions? Comments? One other question for you.
Sure.
It's not related to these three changes. But you've got the old building that's off of Elm Street that's not part of your circle. Now that the lady is either gone or really gone, I'm not sure which. Does that make sense to be part of the project in that configuration? Or should you be putting an A, B, or C unit down there?
Well, we would prefer.
To be a simple.
Yeah. We, our preference would be to have one of these style units. And I wasn't part of the permitting, but there, I think with the conservation commission, they were limiting the development of the building to its existing footprint.
Okay, so there might be a reason why.
You know, I think it's more, it's relating to the buffer zone of the Vernal Pool and the buffer zone, there's a, there's a, here's a Vernal Pool here, so we have a buffer zone to the Vernal Pool, and then we have a buffer zone to.
To the pond.
To the pond. And I think that the house is in between the two buffer zones, and so there was resistance is what my understanding was to expanding the footprint of that, of that home. We would.
And I thought at one point the owner of the property wanted us to continue to live there, which no longer anymore.
Right.
That's not.
That's, that's resolved itself, that issue.
If, if it wasn't a buffer zone, I'm asking the board members, do we care? I mean, quite frankly, having a new, single unit, brand-new construction, I mean, if I was buying into the condo project and I have to keep, I'll keep on this.
That would be our strong preference. We'll, we'll take a look at.
What I'm getting is, it's trying to have sense from this board. We wouldn't care.
Well, one part of the problem was that the lot is pretty wet.
Yeah.
Otherwise, so it doesn't drain that well. So it would need some engineering, from what I remember, it would need some engineering to be able to be buildable, but that's how I remember it. So it would be not as simple as just replacing on that footprint, but re-engineering some of the wetlands. I'm not wetlands, but stormwater management.
Okay, I mean.
I'll talk to our engineer about it, who was the engineer during the development, and find out historically what their discussions were and just see if there's some alternative thoughts and share those with you.
I mean, if, I mean, we're not forcing her, you know, we're just.
Well, our preference would be to do something that's, maybe a sing, a single of one of these unit types in that location would be, would be our.
Or maybe something that's even a little scaled down to that.
Sure.
Closer to that footprint or, or, you know, something that might work. I mean, I, to me, you've just got, well, it's going to be kind of treated as different.
It would be unfinished if it's not.
Well, if you're a condo guy, you know, you're paying dues based on the unit basis, I think, and, you know, jeez, I, you know, maybe, I don't know.
What was the deal with the summer camp?
This is the boathouse that, and the existing permit allows for a new boathouse in this location, and the architect is working on a small, a smaller version of that, something that is consistent with the, this sort of camp-style architecture that could house two canoes, two paddleboards, and two kayaks, which, which we would provide for, for the residency use, but in this location. So I would expect in the next 60 days, we'll be cycling that through for people to review and comment on.
My next, my last question. You guys are going slower than anyone else I've seen. Is there a reason?
Well, we did.
No, no, I take that back. There's one other subdivision that's actually going slower, but.
Okay. We're, we are getting ready to, to begin construction in earnest, and we do have our first building permit with, with the A-building, and we're, we're hoping to start the E-building next and, and then the C and D. So starting, first, first buildings to construct, we have a permit here, and then we're looking to begin these three buildings as well, one after the other, and then, and then advance this way through the development. We do have a permit on C. I think logistically, it works a little bit better for us to start here with E, which we're hoping to go from A to E and then, and then move in that direction.
Just one more comment. I went driving through there. The Catch Basins out by Elm Street seem like the highest point in the whole project. Next time you're going through.
I'll take a look.
They're not going to take any water.
Okay.
I mean, they're like six inches higher than every other part of the road around there.
I'll take a look at that with, with the engineer.
I mean, there's something, something's not right.
Okay.
I don't think.
I haven't noticed it, but I'll, I'll take a look at it.
Particularly the one that's literally right, like there.
Okay.
And, you know, that one would be taking water from going out on Elm Street, in the hill.
Right.
Okay. What are we looking for? A motion to approve the changes for?
To approve the Emily unit and the change to the Avery unit.
I'll entertain such a motion.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Further discussion. Seeing none. How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, anyone abstained, motion carries. And I think that's it for today, right?
Okay. Thank you for your time. I'll, I'll report back on the other items.
I mean, the other items, we're not pushing it. We're just trying to be friendly.
No, I'll, I'll look into both the Catch Basin and the thirty.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. The next item is Hayden Place, McDermott Lane subdivision.
We have not provided information, so.
You want to hold that one, huh? Okay. Let's see, the zoning advisory, let me finish with that. Master plans update. In your packet, you've got the housing one, which I spent a couple of minutes, more than a couple of minutes, adding to it. We'd love to have comments on it, and I also wanted to emphasize and kind of go through the housing goals on page 10. Our plan, as we've talked about it, and I believe John and Claire.
Yeah, it's in the printed package.
Yeah, we, we did a printed package. We're not going to talk about that tonight because, because you're going to get to get it, to read it, so we can talk about it next week. And if anyone else has got another one, meeting next Monday is fairly light. We'd love to finish up another package or two. And I want, you know, we want to go through all these one more time, and then we'll get them all together, and then we'll finalize the schedule. So anyone that's still working on one, please continue to work on it. Since I started the housing one, basically, you can see all the changes I put on, but basically, what I kind of emphasized, that for the last seven, eight years, or since the last master plan was adopted, is we've really approved a lot of rental units and condo units. And kind of what I'm saying is, do we have enough? You know, the last master plan, it was, do we have enough diversity? Do we need rental? Do we need condos? Well, with the 940 legacy farm, uh, 700 condos at Legacy Farms, you got this project, the other guys that were in here, you know, we've done a lot of condo projects. Do we want to slow down in that particular area? We don't, we don't have to do garden apartments. We, the garden apartments were instituted in 81, right when 40B came in place. And it was to be, you don't go for a comprehensive permit, we'll give you a garden apartment. It's got to be within these parameters, and it's got to be two bedrooms, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, we'll live with that as opposed to getting a 40B, I'll say, pushed. Pushed is a better word than what I guess I was thinking.
It was very successful. That's a lot of them were siphoned out.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, all, all the condo projects, basically, that you see in town are, were under that project.
And there were some, some 40Bs.
And, oh, yeah, some were 40Bs, but, I mean, Walcott, was that before?
That was, no, that was the first.
First under a garden apartment. So, so anyway, what I'm kind of saying is, and I, and I kind of thought this way after talking to a lot of people in town, you know, maybe it's time for us to take a breather on housing, dwelling, gross expansion. And so that's kind of what I'm trying to, trying to say in this, the whole area, kind of. And then, basically, for housing goals, I said, our goal is to maintain the character of Hopkinton much as it is today, wish to keep Hopkinton as a very desirable place to live, and is particularly a desirable place for families. Hopkinton is currently building out already permitted rental and major condominium projects that allow us to meet 40B requirements and diversify our housing options. For the near future, we propose to emphasize traditional single-family house developments and a lower rate of growth in dwellings while continuing to meet our Chapter 40B requirements. And in order to do that, these are the goals. I came up with 11 of them. I just wanted to go through that. First of all, Land Use Department, keep track of all the affordable housing units and, and the number of dwellings so that we can predict where we're going to be. And this report will be provided annually to the town, so that, you know, nobody's going to be surprised coming up to a census that we are either short or not. And the Affordable Housing Committee would be reconvened or reappointed if our Chapter 40B 10% is in danger of being reduced below that reason at the next census. Planning Board Review, eliminate flexible community development bylaw. That is the, what we talked about, that's the, the unit or the payment. And I said, review, approve, or eliminate. I'm, I'm not sure it really works really well. Zach had some questions last year, and then they decided not to do anything after looking at it for about one hour. Maybe it could get improved, but I'm, I'm not 100% sure how. Fourth one is proposed changes to the garden apartment bylaws, to say that they're only permitted if we don't meet our 40B 10%. So basically, that would take that whole section of the bylaw, and one of the findings the planning board would have to meet was that to approve one under that section that we're below our 10%. So it doesn't get rid of it, but it puts it in hibernation, I guess, until.
Until it's needed.
Until it's needed again. As opposed to, I, I thought that ended up being more clever than taking it all the way out. But I thought about that. Village housing. Village housing is kind of a garden apartment, but it's, every unit has to be affordable in it. We've built none under that area. They were thinking of, if the Fruit Street property was to develop, it would kind of go under that bylaw, I believe. But basically, to kind of provide that, and put a checks and balances on that, is to require a host community agreement, such as was done for Legacy or for the Muse, which would then, that would put, I'll say, some selectmen, checks and balances on, on, on that particular area. And yet, if the town wanted to use it for town affordable housing in 2029, or whenever we needed it, it'd be available to, to be used.
Good question. Why, how we would require host community for that and not the garden apartment as well? Does it make sense for both?
That's, that's a pretty good question. I, I'd feel free putting that in. I, I was kind of putting garden apartments on hibernation, but, but requiring that in there is not a bad idea. I mean.
Wow.
Yeah. And study new bylaw for affordable rental housing with a host community agreement, and only applicable if we're below our 10% goal. I mean, this would be, maybe not a bylaw that you'd do right away, but it basically codify a muse type thing, that if, if we got into that procedure, you know, this is maybe not one that I would be looking at to do this year or any, anytime soon, because we're not going to need it for a long time. And then, senior housing bylaw. Basically, I think we all heard that age-restricted housing can become non-age-restricted housing. You know, if, if we can't figure out a way to tighten that up based on federal law, then maybe we'd get rid of it. Or host community, I don't know how to fix it, but right now, I think it's broken. Use, this is an overall goal, use the CPA funds. And the CPA has also got, I want to say, over a half million dollars in their housing that they could also be used for, for affordable housing. And 10% of the CPA collective money, so that grows by 100,000 plus a year from that, that, that fund. But basically, when we need to, to meet our requirements. Clarify whether assisted living and nursing home units don't have full kitchens. We had that discussion, not so much this board, but Golden Pond has got full kitchens, and some of their affordable. Is the census going to include them as housing units? We had that discussion on the assisted living on East Main Street for Legacy Farms, where they don't have kitchens, they're not supposed to be counted. But, you know, if they get counted by the federal government, then we're short 12 units. Let's figure out a way to maybe strengthen wherever we talk about assisted living or nursing home uses. Let's see. 10 is something of, going back to programs for, I'll say, first-time home, you know, new families, maybe kids of residence, somehow figure out a way, maybe to, to figure out, and I don't know how to do it, but maybe smart people on Zach could come up with something, or Lane, or somebody. 11 is maintain a list of those properties that are subject to a demolition delay if they have historic or architectural significance. So basically, you buy an older house, you know, kind of from day one, whether you're, you're, you're going to get resistance or not.
Who would manage that? Would that be?
Historic commission, probably. Not us, necessarily. Develop formal policies regarding backlot zoning, dead-end streets, and standards for private public streets. And we've kind of had a lot of those discussions over the last two or three meetings, particularly on the, I'll say, backlot zoning or dead-end streets. So those are what I thought for the housing. If anyone has any more goals or something like that, I think we ought to consider them at all. If people were feeling a little bit comfortable with some of these, I might present a couple of these to Zach tomorrow night at their hearing. It's something, particularly the ones with the garden apartment bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
We need to, if we're thinking about something, we want to just, I'll say, push it, go ahead and do it fairly quick, because if not, everyone that has one of these in their, in their back mind will, will accelerate the development of it.
Yeah.
You know, if, if they see it sunsetting in the future. So, you know, I think a couple of those that are in there, I would propose to present to Zach.
I think that one with the garden apartment should also include the senior housing bylaw in there, too, if it's going to be modified, because they're nearly identical.
Okay.
If it's not going to be eliminated or modified in some other way. That should also have the same restriction.
Okay, maybe, maybe combine, maybe put four, seven?
Because if you do that to garden apartment, all of a sudden, people will want to build the senior housing, and that isn't what we necessarily want, based on number seven.
Right.
Add, add, add four conditions to number seven. I, yeah, I was saying, propose, you know, yes.
What does the board want to talk about, those two bylaws, before you have Zach start working on them, so that they have more of a, more of a focus? Because they could.
Well, I, I just want to get them in their agenda, and we can maybe talk about them a little bit more in the future, and, and we could ask Zach to look at them November time period. We're going to get a lot more busy, because, you know, Pulte and Legacy Farms Road North is going to come, and I saw a plan set, and it's about an inch thick. So it's, but. Other ideas?
I can just comment. I asked Lane for kind of population changes. And it's interesting, and the population is getting older and younger. The middle, the 20 to 55, is shrinking compared to the under 20. And the 55 and over is actually from 2000, 2013, increasing by 50%.
Wow.
So.
Well, I guess, what, what do we say? I'll say, young kids out of college because of their school debt can't afford to buy a house in Hopkinton?
They're not here.
I mean, I think that's what, and some of us are living long.
Yeah. But one of the comments that was made is, that I've heard, is, I think the general feeling in the town for a period of time was the smaller units and the apartments were good because it didn't increase perception, school-aged population, and we wouldn't have to expand the schools. And what I'm kind of starting to hear is, very nice, but it's changing the character of the town, and we have enough. So I think what we're, what you've commented in here is, is a reflection of, I think people's concept now is, the mix is right, and if we continue growing the multifamily, the character of the town that attracted a lot of people to town is going to change. I mean, a lot of discussion, people, you know, I talked to people, going, Upton's looking pretty good, you know, just down the road, and doesn't seem to have the density of growth that we're looking at. So I think it's in the right direction.
Will that change, though, when those units at Legacy are actually built, those, all the single-family homes, at all?
Mean, mean the condos at Legacy?
Well, not the condos, the single-family homes, right? So the, of the 700 that are slated to be.
Well, there's only 50 that are originally approved, and then he's going to go for the change to put the senior housing in, I think, and then that 50 goes to the 15 on the south side. So there isn't that many single-family houses. You've got all those simplexes that kind of look that way.
Yeah.
Except for they're all look the same. I mean, you know, one of the things I think on Legacy, we're going to have to look at early on. Right now, they kind of combined them in villages of about 20 units.
Pods.
Pods. Is the pod idea a good idea? I, maybe from a living standpoint, it is. I'm not sure from a diversity-looking, it, it makes them all look the same.
Good point.
I mean, and I think that might be one of the objections that people have.
Sure.
But I'm pretty sure that Pulte is continuing pods on the north side, but.
I'm sure it's easy for them from a build standpoint, economies of scale.
Well, they would probably build the same amount at each time, but maybe every, you know, but their rationale was that each pod, this pod has all master bedrooms on the first floor, so that people of me that don't want to go up.
Upstairs.
Upstairs would, would go to there, and then I'd have 20 people that are likely to be more my age than younger kids. And, you know, then the duplex of people, whatever attracts you to that housing, you, I mean, that's an interesting intellectual discussion that I hope we have in the next couple of months for that project. But. I'm sensing a fairly reasonable, this, this is okay.
Yeah.
For at least a draft, and kind of ready enough to go off to a, we'll take Elaine's comments and kind of put it in and fix all the, whatever other spelling stuff you found.
So which, which of those would you look to take to Zach tomorrow?
Probably the ones for garden apartments and, and the senior housing. I think those are the highest priorities. and the senior housing. I think those are the highest priority ones. I mean, a lot of these are not Zach kind of requirements either. I mean, these are just a plan to get for the next five years. Some of these are even longer term than that, but so are going to be ready for it. And maybe the flexible community development law. I mean, I think Zach is, and I guess the planning board have to decide, you know, is the amount of money that we get per unit worth, I'll say, tax, you're kinda in a way taxing housing stock, and you're doing it substantially. I don't know whether that's, it's a philosophical question, I think.
Yeah. Depends on your perspective, I guess.
Well, I am very happy that we finally got over our ten percent. I think, I think that's a remarkable achievement for the town.
No small feat.
And, and quite frankly, before Legacy Farms, I didn't think there was a first chance.
Chance in hell.
Yeah. We just couldn't, you know, just couldn't get there. And, and then, when it kinda came through there, and it, and market conditions, et cetera, everyone kinda went there. Okay, so, any other ideas that, for zoning advisory committee?
Is there, is there a minimum-size lot requirement, or does it depend on a zone where, that's all covered, right, Ben?
Oh, yeah.
Every district has a minimum.
Well, speaking of zoning advisory committee, we're going to have a public forum in our October meeting. The project to rezone right near the high school, the dental building and the building to the south of that, which went before Zach, a citizen's petition has been submitted, and it's on the.
It's at the special town.
At the special town meeting on the twenty-sixth, so we're gonna have a public hearing.
On the nineteenth.
On the nineteenth.
Can you explain that again? The, the two buildings?
It's Hopkinton, or some dental, pediatric dental, or whatever.
Yes.
And the one to the south of that, which is a, an older house in a barn. It's in between that and the Irvine property across from Kenny's gas station.
Yep, yep. What's interesting about it is the two houses across the street, one's new and one's historic. So you've now put those two people in a situation where potentially, with no restrictions, they can, they're gonna be looking at commercial property.
It's, it's, Zach was kinda divided on it. I'm, it was a fifty-fifty. They voted to kinda recommend it to us.
They voted to pass it along.
Yeah, yeah. It was kick the can. So anyway, that one's gonna be coming up. Drive by it, kinda get a feeling for it. I've heard that there's some development, there's interest for commercial stuff in that area. So I don't, I haven't heard much more details than that other than, I know a realtor was looking at, like, the Palmer Turk property, and, you know, and the one next to it probably fit in that same category, so I don't know. You don't propose that, hire Wayne Davies as your lawyer for that, if you don't have some plans kinda for it?
I don't.
Anyway, so I think, oh, let's see. Other things that are coming up, the tennis club is, for on Lumber Street, is coming up pretty quick. You'll probably be seeing that on, what, the?
November second.
November second.
Oh.
What font will be starting theirs?
So that's, that's kinda new, and Legacy North, as I said earlier, is, we're working with Roy to, to do some analysis to support that, that item. So, anyway, that's, anything else that we need to talk really about?
I think so.
As Elaine says, she's the last one in town to hear about it, which is not true. Well, I've also, I've also heard rumors that Finn Perry's property is, is up for sale. I mean, is found a buyer or somebody, but I don't know. So that's, that's all the rumors that I am aware of. Okay?
A lice come next to me and was run over and walking in the dark in front of my house.
Oops. And I don't know how far along they are, too. You know, I mean, it, it might be just early on, but I, you know, he's been trying to market it for a while. So anyway. Okay. I think we've spent our time. Look for a motion to adjourn. So, well, second. Moving seconded. Thank you all for coming today. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?